Good morning, everybody. It's so nice to see everybody on this bright shining day on July 12th. I call the meeting of July 12th, 2022, of the DuPage County Board to order. And may I ask, please, would Member Liz Chaplin, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
................................................... Please remain standing as I invite Pastor Darrell Worley from the Grace Church of DuPage in Warrenville to lead us into invocation. Pastor Darrell.
Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for these public servants that give so much of themselves to managing and maintaining the quality of life, rich quality of life, here in DuPage County. Father, we pray that you would grant them wisdom for every matter that is before them this day. We pray that you would grant them words to express with clarity the decisions that they have made to those to whom they matter most. Father, we pray that you would bless them with an unusual measure of joy in their work this day, even if only for their willingness to continue calling out to you for that purpose, for your guidance and for your direction. It's in the name of your Son, our Savior, we pray. Amen.
Mr. Deputy Clerk. Mr. Chad Pierce, would you be kind enough to call the roll?
Member Chaplin.
Here.
Member Chavez.
Here.
Member Covert.
Here.
Member Desart.
Here.
Member DeCiani.
Here.
Member Eckoff.
Here.
Member Garcia.
Here.
Member Hart.
Here.
Member Krajewski.
Here.
Member LaPlante.
Here.
Member Ozog.
Here.
Member Pachowski.
Here.
Member Renahan.
Here.
Member Rutledge.
Here.
Member Schorzy.
Here.
Member Solomon.
Here.
Member Tornatori.
Here.
And Member Zay.
We have a resolution, pretrial probation parole supervision week proclamation. And Julie Renahan, I know you... Sorry about that. So Julie, Member Renahan, Bob McElhen, John Maines, and Dan Smith, would you join me here at the podium? Don Pachowski, of course, of course. Today, we are joined by Judicial and Public Safety Chair Julie Renahan, Director of Probation Bob McElhen, and two of the department's longest-tenured employees, John Maines and Dan Smith, to celebrate the essential duties of an important group of people on our campus. During the week of July 17th, people across the United States will recognize the work that probation, parole, and community supervision professionals do to ensure our public safety. Today, DuPage County joins in this nationwide support of our probation and court services department with the following proclamation. I'm going to read it, and then I'm going to ask our chairman of the committee to say a few words, please. So it goes as follows. Whereas with the goal of creating a safer DuPage, the probation and court services department is an essential part of the justice system, and whereas probation professionals uphold the law with dignity while recognizing the right of the public to be safeguarded from criminal activity, and whereas probation and court service professionals are responsible for supervising an average daily population of 10,500 adults and juveniles on probation or pretrial supervision, whereas the probation officers are highly trained and educated professionals, 100% have at least a bachelor's degree, and 38% have advanced degrees and professional certifications, and whereas probation and court services, these professionals work in partnership with community agencies and groups to provide effective evidence-based services and referrals for offenders, and whereas probation and court service professionals promote prevention, intervention, and advocacy, and whereas probation and court service professionals provide services, support, and protection for victims, and whereas probation and court services professionals advocate for community and restorative justice, and whereas probation and court service professionals are a true force for positive change in DuPage County, now therefore be it resolved that I, Daniel J. Cronin, and Chairman of the Board, members of the county board, do hereby proclaim July 17th to July 23rd, 2022, as pretrial probation and parole supervision week. We honor our county employees in these and other court service positions enacted. This will entertain a motion? Seconded? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it. This is enacted on this 12th day of July 2022. Bob and John, and thank you so much for the good work that you do. I'll follow up. Please.
Thank you, Chairman Cronin, JPS Chair Renahan, and Vice Chair Pachowski, and all county board members for this proclamation. I also have to thank Chief Judge Popejoy, Court Administrator Suzanne Armstrong, for their support, as well as all the judges of the 18th Judicial Circuit who have always been very supportive of the probation department. With me here today are two of our longest-tenured officers. To my immediate right is Dan Smith. Dan Smith works in the Juvenile Probation Division. Dan has 30, is in his 38th year of service with the probation department. John Maines. John Maines, second to my right, represents adult probation and pretrial services. John is in his 42nd year of service with the probation department. Dan and John are two of 185 employees of the probation department who are committed to providing services to adult and juvenile clients, their families, victims, and the court system. The dedication of these employees helps promote positive behavioral change in our clients, which reduces recidivism and helps keep DuPage County safer. Again, I want to thank you for this proclamation. On behalf of myself, John, and Dan, the probation department is very grateful for this proclamation, and we truly appreciate the ongoing support of the county board with our programs and services of the probation department. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob, Dan, John, for your commitment.
I've said more than once, I think parole is the, kind of the underdog, you know, the part that people don't see as much in our system, and it's really integral because you tie the court system to the sheriff, to everything that goes on along in our, everything that we do at JPS. So, thank you for what you do. Thank you for the handshake that you give people, our inmates, to, you know, becoming successful and moving on in their lives. I think it's so important, so, well deserved.
Okay. Will you maybe take a quick picture here? So we move on to the Order of Business Chairman's remarks. Just a few thoughts I'd like to share with you, please. Just a few moments ago, well, just recently, we acknowledged the life-altering impact of the shootings in the city, of course, in Highland Park. And as a result of the scrutiny over the issue of mental health and gun violence, particularly as it relates to the investigation of the Highland Park incident, I wanted to make you aware of efforts made every day right here in DuPage County to prevent gun violence. And I'm going to take a moment to highlight the work of our DuPage County State's Attorney, Bob Berlin, and his staff for their leadership in implementing more than any other county in the state of Illinois, the state's so-called Red Flag Law. This law gives police and family members the ability to petition the court to temporarily safeguard guns from a person deemed to be a danger to him, himself, or herself, or to others. There's a very carefully considered due process. Over the past two years, Illinois judges have stepped in and granted these temporary firearm restraining orders more than 100 times. More than 60% of those cases, those 100 times, occurred right here in DuPage County. State's Attorney Bob Berlin and his staff make a consistent, concerted effort to train police on this temporary firearms restraining order in order to effectively use it as a tool to protect people and to protect their constitutional rights at the same time, safeguarding guns while someone is going through a particularly difficult time. We've been quite effective at using this tool, thanks to Bob, thanks to the staff, and thanks to the police personnel who are trained and execute this policy quite skillfully. According to State's Attorney Berlin, most of these orders are the result of police who know what to look for and how to accurately document the risks as they work closely with families, trying to keep everyone in the community safe. The state passed the Red Flag Law in 2019, and our state's attorney believes that DuPage County's careful implementation of the statute has indeed, without a question, prevented violence and saved lives right here in our backyard, and I agree. I believe that Bob's efforts to get out in front of this law, provide training and resources to police and families, and to work with our judges to implement the law thoughtfully, has greatly contributed to our safety. I believe that both his office, our judges, and our law enforcement partners should be acknowledged for leading the state in this effort. We know that public safety is our top priority, and this is one way we put that principle into action to benefit our residents. So, thank you, Bob Berlin. I did want to point out, earlier in our invocation, we also want to wish, convey a wish to our Muslim friends who are observing Eid al-Ata, and wish them Eid Mubarak. So, it's a beautiful celebration, and I wanted to make sure I took this opportunity to express that. I also wanted to offer this thought, if I may, part of Chairman's remarks, I suppose. I asked that during our prayer today, I was thinking, and I, we remember those that were killed and injured in last week's tragic 4th of July shooting in Highland Park, and it's just horrific and sick, and we all have friends or family that are close to it. As we do so, I'll ask that we also offer our prayers for the 10 people that were killed and 62 others wounded by gunfire over the 4th of July weekend in the city of Chicago. Gun violence and these tragedies are not relegated to one suburban area, or one color, or one class of persons. We see it to the east, we see it to the north, and I think we can all agree that these deaths are senseless and horrible. We pray for the families, all families in the cities and the suburbs whose lives have been shattered by gun violence, and so I know that those are thoughts that we all have on our mind and thoughts that we probably undoubtedly shared during our invocation. So those are my remarks. That concludes my Chairman's report. We move on to the next Order of Business. It is a public comment. Public comment. Do we have any public comment? I think we have one online comment. Yes, sir. Chad, oh, you got a couple of folks? Yeah. Okay, we have two folks that have showed up here in person. We have Roberta Borijo from the League of Women Voters of Roselle. And yes, please proceed.
As the Chairman said, I am Roberta Borino. I am the current president of the League of Women Voters of Roselle Bloomingdale. I wanted to thank the board for the purchase of the new election equipment. As an election judge and a participant in the project to introduce the election equipment to the community at local libraries and park districts in my service area, I can tell you the new equipment was enthusiastically embraced by voters during early voting and on Election Day. Voters appreciated the cost savings and the ecological impact of eliminating excess ballots, pardon me, ballot printing due to only printing ballots on demand and the tabular machines that double-check their ballots before errors, for errors before submission. As a judge, it was wonderful that no voter had to be turned away because they were in the wrong polling place. The ability to vote anywhere is a convenience that will continue to increase voter turnout. Thank you all for what you have done to make our democracy work. Thank you.
Carol Davis.
Hello, and good morning, members of the county board. I'm here as, wearing my election judge hat today. And so often, we don't take time to thank people, and so today, I am here to thank you, the members of the county board, for the new election system and some of the new procedures that were in place this year, because it all worked incredibly well, from my point of view. Allowing people to vote at any election site in DuPage County was a tremendous improvement. And by the way, that is completely permissible under Illinois election law. And for the first time, we did not have to send people to another voting location after they had waited in line to check in. This really reduced unneeded aggravation and tension in the polling place. Thank you, because I know that there are a lot of doubts about using this law to the fullest capacity, like we did in DuPage. But doing so is a tremendous service to the voter, and it greatly improves the election judge experience. The fact that provisional ballots will not scan in the new system is also a great improvement. We did not have to watch provisional voters like a hawk because we were secure in the knowledge that their ballots simply would not scan. And I am sure that elected officials in close races are happy to hear that. With the new equipment, only ballots from verified voters get tallied. Not having stacks of ballots lying around was also wonderful. No one at my election site was issued the wrong ballot because there were no wrong ballots to accidentally pick up and give to a voter. Not having stacks of unvoted ballots lying around is good both for election security and the environment. A few voters commented positively that their ballot was being printed special, just for them. They were relieved that the tradition of giant piles of unvoted ballots was a thing of the past. This was one exchange I had with a voter. You mean that if you don't have a voter right here in front of you, you do not have a ballot anywhere in here? And I replied, "No, sir, we do not." And he was very pleased to hear that, I can tell you. Having only one central tabulation machine was also a huge improvement. It allowed other judges to focus on paperwork and teardown instead of monitoring multiple machines with printouts. Also, it was very easy to change the paper on the new equipment. The weird spools and spindles with three pages of directions on how to set them up are gone. Hallelujah, and good riddance. In short, the equipment worked well. It worked really, really well. Nothing froze, nothing jammed. It was really incredible. So thank you very much.
Evan, did you have one more remark? Online remark? Comment?
Good morning, everyone. One comment this morning. The subject is Gentile versus County of DuPage, and the comment is from Gerald Gentile. Comment reads, "The county's argument is tough sledding. Gentile alleges that before the COVID-19 pandemic, he could quote, 'perform all essential functions of his job,' end quote. That argument overstates the allegations of the complaint. Gentile alleged that onsite inspections were part of the job, but he didn't allege that onsite inspections were an essential part of the job with no possible workaround. In fact, he did the opposite. He alleged that he teleworked for several months from March to July 2020," a citation of id at paragraph 15, comma, 21. "He performed, quote, 'all essential functions of his job,' end quote, during that stretch of time," citation id a. Police Board members, read the case and discover the workings of HR and Mary Keating during the onset of COVID-19 and how I was summarily tossed to the proverbial curb after 15-plus years. That is the end of that comment.
Okay, thank you. I think that concludes our public comment portion of our agenda. We move on to the next item entitled Consent. So I'm going to read the items, and then I'll entertain a motion. So, first and foremost, 7A, DuPage County Board, regular meeting, Tuesday, June 28th, 2022. B, Payment of Claims, 6/24/2022 Pay List. C, Payment of Claims, 6/28/2022 Pay List. D, Wire Transfers, 6/27/2022 Wire Transfers. E, Payment of Claims, 7/1/2022 Pay List. F, Consent Item, County Clerk's Statement of Receipts and Disbursements, December 1, 2021 through May 31st, 2022. G, Consent Item, Change Orders to Various Contracts as Specified in the Attached Packet. Entertained a motion?
So...
So moved and seconded. Mr. Chad, would you please call the roll?
Member Chaplin.
Hi.
Member Chavez.
Hi.
Member Covert.
Hi.
Member Desart.
Hi.
Member DeCiani.
Hi.
Member Eckoff.
Hi.
Member Garcia.
Hi.
Member Hart.
Hi.
Member Krajewski.
Hi.
Member LaPlante.
Hi.
Member Ozog.
Hi.
Member Pachowski.
Hi.
Member Renahan.
Hi.
Member Rutledge.
Hi.
Member Schorzy.
Hi.
Member Solomon.
Hi.
Member Tornatori.
Hi.
And Member Zay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pierce. We move on to the next Order of Business, County Board, in Member Solomon's absence, Mr. Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move on CBR 279-2022, Appointment of Thomas Marcucci to Suburban Board Pace.
But a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Members Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Chavez.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Hi.
Member Desart.
Hi.
Member DeCiani.
Hi.
Member Eckoff.
Hi.
Member Garcia.
Hi.
Member Hart.
Hi.
Member Krajewski.
Hi.
Member LaPlante.
Hi.
Member Ozog.
Hi.
Member Pachowski.
Hi.
Member Renahan.
Hi.
Member Rutledge.
Hi.
Member Schorzy.
Hi.
Member Solomon.
Hi.
And Member Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Thank you, Mr. Zay. Onto the Order of Finance, Member Liz Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman. Just by way of committee update, this morning, we had very good discussion on the sheriff's budget. We had very good discussion on the CVB hotel program, and then we also had some discussion on our precinct map. So, we had a good, robust meeting and lots of discussion, and I apologize for us running a little bit late. So with that, I move approval of FIR 027622, Resolution Revision to the Personnel Policy Manual.
Motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Chavez.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Hi.
Member Desart.
Hi.
Member DeCiani.
Hi.
Member Eckoff.
Hi.
Member Garcia.
Hi.
Member Hart.
Hi.
Member Krajewski.
Hi.
Member LaPlante.
Hi.
Member Ozog.
Hi.
Member Pachowski.
Hi.
Member Renahan.
Hi.
Member Rutledge.
Hi.
Member Schorzy.
Hi.
Member Solomon.
Hi.
Member Tornatori.
Hi.
And Member Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman. I move approval of FIR 027722, Resolution Reducing the Bond for the Office of the Jury Commissioner of the 18th Judicial Circuit Court.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 027822, Resolution Appointment of IMRF Authorized Agent.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 028322, Resolution Approving a Grant Agreement with the FMC Naterium for the Use of ARPA Funds in the Amount of $150,000.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 028222, Resolution Additional Appropriation for the ARPA Fund for the DuPage Convention and Visitors Bureau Hotel Assistance Program, $2 million, ARPA item.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 028022, Resolution Approving an Agreement with the DuPage Convention and Visitors Bureau for the Use of ARPA Funds for Hotel Assistance Program in the Amount of $2 million, ARPA item.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 028422, Resolution Additional Appropriation for the ARPA Fund for ChooseDuPage and the Convention Visitors Bureau Marketing Program for $750,000, ARPA item.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 028122, Resolution Approving an Agreement with ChooseDuPage and the DuPage Convention and Visitors Bureau for the Use of ARPA Funds for a Tourism and Business Attraction Marketing Campaign in the Amount of $750,000.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 028522, Resolution Additional Appropriation for the ARPA Fund for the Convention, DuPage Convention and Visitors Bureau CMAP Program, $50,000.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 028622, Resolution Approving the Use of ARPA Funds for the DuPage Convention and Visitors Bureau to Participate in a Cooperative Advertising Program in the Amount of $50,000.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 028722, Resolution Budget Transfer 7/12/2022, Various Companies and Accounting Units.
Leave is granted.
I move approval of FIP 020822, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract Purchase Order to Enter into an Agreement with Resrow Financial Investment Management to Provide 457 Plan Related Services, including Strategic Plan Design, Consolidation, and fiduciary services for Human Resources. This contract covers the period of August 1st, 2022 through July 31st, 2023, for a contract total not to exceed $54,000.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. And finally, I move approval on Change Order, on a Change Order Amendment to Purchase Order 5835001, Issue to ODP Business Solutions to Increase Purchase, the Purchase Order in the Amount of $27,000 to Cover the Cost of Office Supplies for Various County Departments Due to Higher Costs and Increased Usage for the Purchase Amount Order Not to Exceed $40,000.
Leave is granted. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Fine report. Onto the Order of Environmental. Member Rutledge, for a committee update.
Thank you, Chairman Cron. I'll kind of follow up from the primary election last week. First of all, I, for one, will concur with the comment about giant piles of unused ballots. That drove me crazy all along. It's expensive paper, and to have to print 110% when we're getting a 20-something turnout for a primary election, I think is a huge win for our budget, for the environment, all kinds of things there. The other thing I wanted to mention was, we did do the political sign or plastic sign recycling. Anybody could have put any of their kids' school signs or anything into the dumpsters that we had here on the property, and it looks like we got about 2/3 of a dumpster full of political signs that kept those things out of our landfill, and we will do that again after the general election in November. So, thank you for all who made the time to come and keep those things out of our landfill.
Very nice. Thank you. Health and Human Services, Member Julie Renahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to discharge the Health and Human Services Committee for consideration of Items 11A through K.
But a motion and a second. This is required voice vote. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll. There's been a motion and a second to discharge committee. Oh, okay. So all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Close nay? The ayes have it. These items are discharged. Please proceed. Member Renahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of HHSP 209-22, A Contract with Alpha Baking Company to Service, just bring breads, wools, guns for the care center and our campus cafes and such, August 5th, 2022 through August 4th, 2023, not to exceed $66,000.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schorzy.
Hi.
Member Solomon.
Hi.
Member Tornatori.
Hi.
Member Zay.
Hi.
Member Chaplin.
Hi.
Aye.
Member Chavez.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DeCiani.
Aye.
Member Eckoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Krajewski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
And Member Pachalski.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Member Renahan.
I move approval of HHSP 210-22, This is a Contract with Craig Dr. Pepper American Bottling Company for Can-Bottle Beverages and Fountain for the Care Center and Cafes on Campus, July 30, 2022 through July 29, 2023, Not to Exceed $50,900.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan.
I move approval of HHSP 211-22, Approval of Contract to Chicago United Industries to Furnish, Deliver, and Install Energy Star Appliances for Weatherization Program for Community Services, July 12, 2022 through September 30, 2023, Not to Exceed $67,367.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan.
I move approval of HHSP 212-22, A Contract for Professional Medical and Surgical Supply to Furnish and Deliver Ostomy, Tracheostomy, Urological, and Enteral Supplies and Services, and Enteral Feeding Formulas for the Care Center, July 30, 2022 through July 29, 2023, Not to Exceed $85,000.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan.
I move to combine Items 11E through K. These are all authorizations for overnight travel.
E through K. There's been a motion to combine. Seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The items are combined. Please proceed.
I move approval of Item E, which is the Lie Heat Manager to Go to a Springfield Workshop, August 15 through 16, 2022, for $404.50 for Community Services. Item F, Percentage of Income Payment Plan Coordinator, to Attend PY 2023 Energy Assistance and Procedures Workshop, August 15 through 16, 2022, $164.50. Item G, for Community Services Manager to Attend Mandatory Regional Abbot's Bud Quarterly Meeting in Springfield, July 20 to the 21st, 2022, $380. Item H, for the Community Development Manager to Go to NASED in Colorado Springs, Colorado, September 19 through 22, 2022, $2,101.50. Item I, for Housing and Community Development Planner to Also Attend NASED in Colorado Springs, Colorado, September 19 through 22, 2022, $2,129.50. Item J, for the Senior Housing and Community Development Planner to Go to NASED, also in Colorado Springs, September 19 through 22, 2022, $2,129.50. And finally, for the Senior Services Case Manager to Attend the Illinois Department on Aging Mandatory Training to Obtain Certification, July 12 and 13, 2022, $497.
Okay. Been a motion and a second. There's a request for leave. Leave is granted. Thank you very much. A fine report. On to the order of Judicial Public Safety, Member Renahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to note for anybody on the committee, we heard from the sheriff today at Finance, but on August 2, we're going to hear from two other of our big JPS partners, the state's attorney and public defender, so everyone is welcome, of course, to come to that. I move to discharge the JPS Committee for Consideration of Items 12A through H.
Okay, there's been a motion to discharge Items A through H, did you say?
Yes.
Yes. And there's a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, the ayes have it. The items are discharged. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of JPSR 273-22, Resolution Acceptance Appropriation of Violent Crime Victims Assistance Program for the State's Attorney's Office, $33,000.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schworzy.
Aye.
Member Selman.
Aye.
Member Tornatori.
Aye.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chavez.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DeCiani.
Aye.
Member Eckoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Krajewski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
And Member Pachalski.
Aye. Thank you, sir. Member Renahan.
Thank you. I move approval of JPSR 274-22, Resolution Acceptance and Appropriation of National Forensic Science Improvement Grant Program, PY 21, for the Sheriff's Office, $176,666.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Request for leave. Leave is granted. Member Renahan.
I move approval of JPSP 0207-22, Purchase Order to Midwest Office Interiors for Purchase and Installation of Lockers for the Jury Commission Lounge, $44,688.66.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan.
I move approval of JPSP 215-22, A Purchase Order to Midwest Office Interiors for Purchase of Replacement Chairs and Courts and Jury Rooms, $102,542.20, also for the Court.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan.
I move approval of JPSP 213-22, A Purchase Order to Insight Public Sector for Purchase of Desktop PCs for the Circuit Court Clerk, $57,680.
Leave is granted.
I move approval of JPSP 214-22, Contract Purchase Order to Illinois Communication Sales for the Purchase of Six Site IP Interface 800 Megahertz Radio System for the Sheriff's Office, Not to Exceed $43,750.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan.
I move approval for an Authorization of Overnight Travel for the Office of Homeland Security Emergency Management Training Exercise Coordinator to Travel to Macomb, Illinois, July 27 through the 29th, to Attend and Train the Trainer Course. He will then be qualified to teach the course in DuPage County with instructors from the Illinois Fire Service Institute, and will be able to conduct more courses in the area, and all travel and costs are covered.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan.
And finally, I move approval of another Overnight Travel Authorization for the Office of OHSEM to Go to Springfield, Illinois, September 6 through the 9, 2022, to Attend Illinois Emergency Management Agency Training Summit, No Cost.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Renahan. A fine report. On to the order of Legislative for a Committee Update, but Member Desart is not here today. Anybody have a committee update? Okay, all good. We move on to the next order of business, Public Works, Member Mary Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I move to discharge the Public Works Committee for Consideration of Items 14A through 14H.
Been a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, the ayes have it. The items are discharged. Please proceed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of FMR 026822, Recommendation for the Approval of the Fifth Amendment to the Lease Agreement between the County of DuPage and TGA Park 88 LLC for the Lease of Warehouse Space for the Storage of DuPage County Election Equipment for the County Clerk for Facilities Management for the 24-Month Period, August 1, 2023 through July 31, 2025, for a Total Contract Amount Not to Exceed $604,600.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Ozog.
Yes.
Member Pachalski.
Aye.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schworzy.
Aye.
Member Selman.
Aye.
Member Tornatori.
Aye.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chavez.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DeCiani.
Aye.
Member Eckoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Krajewski.
Aye.
And Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Thank you. Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of a Resolution, PWR 027522, Resolution to Rescind Resolution, PWR 017422, DuPage River-Salt Creek Membership Dues, 2022-25, Contract Amount $808,567.
Been a motion and a second. Is there a request for leave? Leave is granted.
Thank you. I move for approval of PWR 027122, DuPage River-Salt Creek Work Group Membership Dues for 2022-26 are in the Total Amount of $1,096,786,000 to be caused, shared in the Amount of $147,146,000 to be paid by Stormwater Management, and $949,640,000 to be paid by Public Works.
Leave is granted.
Thank you. I move for approval of FMP 020322, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract to Lift Works Incorporated to Furnish and Deliver Two New Genie Forklifts with Gated Extension Deck for County Facilities for Facilities Management for the Period Through November 30, 2022, for a Contract Total Amount Not to Exceed $38,332,86.
Leave is granted. Member Ozog.
I move for approval of 202260, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract to the City of Wheaton to Provide Fire Alarm Monitoring Services for the County Campus for Facilities Management for the Period July 6, 2022 through June 30, 2023, for a Contract Total Amount Not to Exceed $21,420.
Leave is granted. Member Ozog.
Thank you. I move for approval of PWP 020422, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract with AT&amp;T to Provide Business Analog Lines and Analog Circuits for Public Work Facilities for the Period August 1, 2022 through March 15, 2024, for a Contract Total Amount Not to Exceed $71,400.
Leave is granted. Member Ozog.
I move for approval of PWP 020522, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract to Polydine Incorporated for Polymer for Both the Woodridge-Green Valley and Knoll-Wood Wastewater Treatment Facilities for Public Works for the Period November 1, 2022 through November 31, 2023, for a Total Contract Amount Not to Exceed $350,000.
Leave is granted. Member Ozog.
Thank you. I finally move for approval of PWP 020622, Recommendation for Approval of a Contract to Peregrine Services Incorporated for Printing and Direct Mail Services of Sewer and/or Water Bills for the Three-Year Period August 1, 2022 through July 31, 2025, for a Total Contract Amount Not to Exceed $66,000.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Ozog. A fine report.[1435.41]